Good evening. Sounds like we're having a good time out there. That's great. We're back from a closed session. We're going to go and reconvene the meeting. We're going to -- there were no reportable actions by the Board in closed session. And we are going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. And I've asked Trustee Brown to lead us in the pledge.
Please rise and put your hand up.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go into Item B introductions, I'd like to ask that if there's anyone here who wishes to address the Board on any topic, that you fill out a gold card and hand it to the Board Secretary right next to the rostrum. I'm going to ask that you do that now so that we can properly allocate time throughout the agenda. We will not be accepting any new gold cards about midway through the introductory period. So if you're interested in addressing, please identify on the card which agenda item you're interested in addressing the Board, as we would like to make sure we allocate the time appropriately. So we are now at introductions. And Dr. Rocha, if you will just introduce perhaps our moment of silence.
Yeah. Thank you, President Martin. At this time, I'd like to call Chief Donald Yoder to the podium. On -- the purpose of this is, given the tragedy of the bombings at Boston Marathon, there was a campus police officer who was murdered and who served at MIT. And also, we know that during a given year and even recently at USC and other campuses, the campus police officers have been killed in the line of duty. So first of all, Chief Yoder, all of us want to thank you and want to thank all of the officers and cadets who served this campus and put themselves at risk every day for our safety and security. And I'd like you to, for your fallen comrades, I'd like you to just lead us in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise? And just take the next 60 seconds really to think about MIT Officer Sean Collier and his family, and say just a quiet prayer on behalf of them. So please bow your heads. Okay. Just want to thank each and every one of you. And again, I want to thank my officers for the great job that they do. And Dr. Rocha, thank you for your kind words. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. President Martin, I have the happy duty of presenting to you a certificate for our colleague and the newly-named California Community College Classified Employee of the Year for 2013, Don Eckman.
Don, I'm really excited to give this to you because when so many people heard your name, their emotional reaction was, "Oh, yes, he so deserves it." And I heard that over and over again as it was announced that this award was coming. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'm pleased to present you this award. And if there's anything you'd like to say, we'd love to hear.
Thank you very much, Don. I'd like to thank the Board. It's definitely an honor that, you know, I never would have thought. And all the people that have sent me emails, it's just been great. I really enjoy it. I enjoy my service here at the college. And, you know, it's coming to that day. Friday is the day. And that's what I believe we're all here for, is for the students. And to provide them an environment that they can learn in and enjoy and want to return to and tell their families about. So I keep that in mind every day in what I do. And I really appreciate all the thanks and I'll keep doing what I'm doing. Again, thank you very much. I really appreciate this. And, you know, thank you again.
Also, I just -- we're looking forward to honoring Mr. Eckman in Sacramento on Tuesday at the Board of Governors. I hope you're able to come up. There's a special event where the official award will be given. And I'm looking forward to seeing you. And that reminds me, too, because Sandra Haynes on our faculty got the Faculty Member of the Year. And as far as I know, PCC is the only campus that's had both the Classified and Faculty Members of the Year this year. And it shows that something really great is happening at PCC, and the state recognizes it.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Well, it's -- day after tomorrow is our 88th Annual Commencement. And we had the great joy previous to this meeting of having a reception and recognition for our summa cum laude students, and some of whom I see in the room. So may I ask our summa cum laude students who are with us to please rise? Okay? And summa cum laude is Latin for "the highest honor," which you achieve by achieving a 4.0 average for all of your coursework at PCC. So we congratulate you, and we look forward to seeing you at Robinson Stadium on Friday night.
And as I said earlier, on behalf of the Board, a tremendous congratulations. I get the privilege of shaking every single one of their hands. I told them I wasn't going to wash this hand. And then somebody said, you know, they got a better idea. Now that I've shaken their hands and it's all right here, maybe if I go like this, maybe it'll get in there. Maybe some of it will rub off, you know? Because I told them about my stellar academic career at PCC, and it wasn't even close. So we're really -- we're pleased. We're glad you're here and looking forward to Friday. Last call on gold cards. I need those right now. And while you're doing that, Dr. Rocha, we have some more special awards.
Yeah, we have -- this is the commencement week, so it's a time for great recognition. So with this one, I will throw it over to my good friend and colleague, the President of the Academic Senate, Dustin Hanvey, to introduce the next recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. At the award ceremony about an hour ago, we also had the opportunity of giving out our 12 Academic Senate Scholarship Awards for this year. Are any of the awardees here? Can you please stand, please? Could we congratulate them, please? And I'd like to publicly thank the Board of Trustees and the President for allowing us to have our ceremony together with the summa cum laude. It was really enjoyable for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. And finally, we have a bit of -- we call this a partnership story. So I would invite to the podium Dean Barbara Freund and Debbie Curtin from Blair High School, if you'd come forward. And we could honor these good people for a long time and regale them with plaques and recognitions. But recently, it was the week before last, we had a really wonderful CTE Career Fair Day. And we have been working in partnership with POSD for many years. And Barbara and Debbie and our good friends at Blair High are probably the, you know, the great emblems and personification of that partnership. So I asked them to come tonight so that we could applaud them and recognize them, and so they could just give us a few words about what they're actually doing for the benefit of our students. So Barbara?
Thank you, Dr. Rocha and the Board. Well, actually, if you look on the agenda, it says CTE Career Fair, which suggests that I might have had anything to do with it, and actually, all I did was attend. The credit really goes to Dean DeVilla and Lionel Wiggins and the entire Career Tech group who put together an incredible event for us where we were able to showcase some of these programs. The relationship that we have with the Blair Health Academy, the Health Careers Academy, is one that is growing, actually. And so we've had a few interactions and a little bit of collaboration. And we're looking forward to actually expanding that now, where we will be offering credit, PCC College credit, for some of the health-related courses that they will teach in the high school. We're also looking to expand several of the certificate programs, specifically as it relates to personal care aids for students who won't even need to have finished high school yet. They can earn that certificate. And then career ladder into some of our other programs at PCC, such as Certified Nursing Assistant and Medical Assistant. That's just to give you an example. But really, the people that need to tell you about what's happening at the school are the folks that are in the school. And so the class president, Shana Reed, is going to give you a little bit of information. And as she comes up, I actually would like the rest of the Health Academy students who've come all the way, they walked here tonight, if they would just stand up and let us recognize them as well. This is the future of healthcare before you. So, Shana?
Hello, my name is Shana Reed. And as you know, I'm the class president for the Health Careers Academy. On behalf of the students, parents, and teachers, I'd like to thank PCC for their partnership with the Health Academy. I'd also like to thank them for the grant that they gave us so we could get new medical supplies. I'd like to thank Mr. Wiggins for coming and talking to her senior class about career and college preparation. And last but not least, I'd like to give a special thanks to Dr. Freund for her partnership and for the programs that she is offering us, such as anesthesia tech, nursing, EMT, CNA, Rad Tech, dental assisting and hygiene, and medical assisting. Thank you.
On behalf of the staff at Blair Health Careers Academy, we'd like to thank you. And as the gentleman said earlier, we're here for the students, and I think my student has said it all for me, so thank you.
Great. President Martin, those are our recognitions for this evening.
Okay. The next item is public comment on non-agenda item. And while the other Board officers are counting the cards and figuring out the minutes there, general rules of decorum here. We, of course, this is a wonderful forum for a civil discourse on many topics, and we're excited to hear from everyone who has taken the time and effort to come out tonight. We thank you for that. We want to make sure that, within the respective Board norms, that no comments that are made are any kind of personal comments against any individual, of course, on policy of the college. And that's very, very appropriate, and it's very appropriate, and we look forward to hearing from you. How we -- what does it look like for time?
Three minutes each.
So, and how many cards we have?
13.
So there's a few more cards, and we're going to ask that each speaker speak for about three minutes. Vice President Fellow will give you a warning. And then if you happen to go over, I kind of will remind you that you're going over. And I'm sure we'll all cooperate here together, won't we? So, and here's how we'd like to do this. When you get up there, the first thing you do, if you'll just repeat your name slowly so we know who you are, even though it's on the card, sometimes we don't pronounce it as well as we wish we could. And the other Board Officer, Trustee Brown, will be calling names in advance. So if you're the next one or the third one up, if you can just kind of get ready, come up to the rostrum and get ready to queue up right in the microphone. We have a really heavy agenda tonight and a lot of other items to go over after this, but this is, of course, very important. So, Trustee Brown, will you read the first three names, please?
Absolutely. So we'll begin with Jane Hollinger, to be followed by Nat Reed, and then Marjorie Smith. So if you could please just line up close by, I'll appreciate it.
I think most of you know, usually the Board, this is a non-agenda item, so the Board usually will not be responding. For those that this is your first time here, the Board will really not be responding to this. This is a time for you, the public, to express your issues and concerns to us.
Jane Hollinger. You may think, "Why does this woman keep coming to speak to us?" I come because since 1971, I have been associated with this college. I have seen peaks and crevices, and I have seen all the work towards equitably solving problems and addressing issues in all areas of the college. And now I am sad, because even when we had differences during previous time periods, the various facets of the college, in spite of some dissension, worked toward building the best possible academic experience for our students and cooperative working conditions where all employees were respected. I am sad this is no longer the case. A good portion of the faculty, classified, and students feel that there is no respect for their abilities or their goals. I am sad that a student told me she tried over 500 times to enter the computer to obtain newly devised, but not well-planned, second spring. Students tell me they wish they had gone to Santa Monica, which retained the winter session, or to Glendale. I am sad that community members say to me that it is too bad about Pasadena City College because it used to be such a good college. And I tell them that regardless of what the administration does, the staff continues to do the job, the faculty continues to give outstanding presentations in their discipline areas. I am sad there has been so much misrepresentation by the administration in areas like stating that the trimester had been reviewed by the calendar committee and that the school is determined to make the change. Has anyone done research on trimesters in the community college system? If we change, we will be out of line with other community colleges and most of the schools that accept our graduates. Is that a choice that supports the student population? I am sad that no research was done on the success of lunar intercession in many of our discipline areas. In many courses, the longer hours and four days per week environment breed success, not destroy it. I am sad that the strong faculty that retired with an insurance on tape by the President and a letter from the lawyer that past practices would be followed, and we would be offered a class or two after full-time overload. Instead, we were fired only a few days before our classes were to resume last spring. Do you think that no preparation time was devoted to those classes? Do you think that part-time faculty hired three days before the semester had time to build these classes? If you believe that, I am really sad. I am sad the students were vilified and threatened when the student government took no confidence vote in the President. When the courier was chastised for student reporting, don't we value freedom of speech? I am not sad alone. So many of the school's employees are sad at the decline of collegial environment and the total ignorance displayed in the duplicity of the administration between what it says publicly and what it says privately. Thank you.
Nat Reed?
Good evening, Chair Martin, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Nat Reed. I'm a former Chair of the Board of the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce. I'm a parent of former students, and I am a former teacher at PCC. And with me are two of a very large group of community leaders who have come together to express our concern over what is going on at, on the campus of PCC. And I've, because we are concerned, we have contributed, each of us, to run an ad, a full-page ad, in tomorrow's Pasadena Star News. And I've brought copies for you, and there are copies for those in the audience who would like them, from Judy Smith in the back. We came together as citizens for a better college because of concerns about these highly orchestrated, what we feel are, well, we feel are highly orchestrated votes of non-confidence, calls for the resignation of the President. We see a spirit of dissension, not cooperation. We hear angry voices at Board meetings with mean language, with character assassination. And we are coming out of the stands to come onto the field to remind you that we elected you. We are the voters. We represent the voters who elected you, and we elected you to run the college. Administrators administer, teachers teach, students learn. We are the ones who pay for this college. We are the taxpayers. It is an atmosphere in which we must all do more with less. That's the sign of the times. You must, as administrators, I know that you would like more money from us, the taxpayers. You must do more with less, and the faculty must do more with less. And this must be the spirit here. We're concerned about the status of the negotiations for contract, that these have gone on so long, that an entire year was lost, a year in which faculty --
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Let me then, Margaret Seidenquist had to leave. Let me deliver her message. And this is to President Rocha. You, sir, during a period when your counterparts in other government agencies were having to cut staff and put people on furlough, you found ways to keep every single job at a time when the faculty and staff needed those jobs and needed that pay without a single layoff and without a single furlough. You deserve better than the comments you've gotten and the gratitude you've gotten from the faculty. On behalf of the Pasadena-area community, sir, we apologize to you for that, and we thank you for saving those salaries, those jobs, and keeping them from furlough. That's our message.
And Trustee Brown, will you call the next two after Margaret Smith, so they can get ready?
Lydia Gutierrez. John Furman.
My name is actually Marjorie Smith, not Margaret. Marjorie.
Thank you.
Members of the Board of Trustees, having read the official missives by both the Board and the Superintendent President of the Pasadena Area Community College District issued in response to the action of no confidence registered by the Senate on April 15th of this year, I stand before you this evening to register my disappointment. As an active voting member of the Academic Senate and a full-time tenured assistant professor, I am dismayed by the actions of this administration under the leadership of the Superintendent and flummoxed by the Board's unequivocal and unanimous support of the Superintendent President and his administration. I have sat on the Senate as an elected representative for my division for approximately two years, and during this time, I have witnessed the undermining and slow erosion of shared governance, a weakening engendered by the actions of the Superintendent President. For this reason and this reason alone, I join my colleagues and fellow senators in registering votes of no confidence. I believe in the process of deliberation the faculty bodies have undertaken is in the best interest of student success and the faculty, the people actually in the classroom working week by week to ensure that students learn, can and should be trusted to have student success as their foremost priority. Thus, to have my action, the actions of my colleagues, and the action of the Senate characterized as a deliberate discrediting of Dr. Rocha because he is actually a strong leader, dismissed as a tactic related to protracted contract negotiations, and disregarded as personal attacks spearheaded by a very small, organized group that is not concerned with things professional or academic is quite disheartening. I assure you all that my concerns are professional as well as academic. I've lost confidence in the leadership of the Superintendent President because his recommendation to the Board regarding the changes to the 2012-2013 academic calendar ignored a year-long process of shared governance. This concern is both professional and academic. I've lost confidence in the current leadership because the mandated restructuring plan of the college does not reflect the contributions and recommendations of the constituent bodies that contributed to an extensive and extended process, and thus ignores the mutually agreed-upon and state-regulated policies of shared governance. This concern is both professional and academic. I've lost confidence in leadership that --
30 seconds.
-- in spite of a year-long shared governing process to establish appropriate numbers for class size, imposed increases to enrollment closing numbers. Furthermore, I've lost confidence in an administration that, despite claims of prioritizing student success, has hastily implemented a series of short-sighted plans which, despite their intentions, have created onerous obstacles, both logistic and pedagogical, to student success. Although I'm disappointed, my intentions tonight are simple. I wish to encourage the members of the Board to reconsider their steadfast and stalwart support and be conscientious and mindful of the call to listen openly and exemplify to students how civil debate can in spirit practice and in fact be accomplished. Advice issued recently to the incoming executive board --
We need to wrap it up.
-- by the current Board President. Thank you for your time.
Lydia Goldman?
Pasadena Board of Trustees and fellow audience, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I had the unique experience of bringing 17 senior citizens with me to the Grand Premiere of '42. Because you cared enough and you shared, I also want to thank the Pasadena City Foundation for providing those tickets. It was with great disappointment that I did not see Professor Schwartzser attending. So the $10 that I purposely gave for him to see the movie, and he did not attend, I am asking him to give that $10 to the Pasadena City College Foundation. I think that'd be wisely used. I'd hate to see it used any other way. But thank you so much. It's really a travesty when you see a professor comparing the civil rights movement to entertainment and trivializing it. But you, Board of Trustees and PCCF, stood up and said no to that. With sincerity, I thank you, and I still get nervous when I speak, but with sincerity, I thank you. And the Banniger Association thanks you also. Thank you.
John Furman. Simon Fraser. Chris Delormeant.
Thank you, members of the Board. Mr. President, my name is John Furman. I'm here tonight to express my support for the Board and the administration. I was distressed by the recent no-confidence votes by the faculty. Certainly, there's always room for improvement. I've heard from a number of my friends on the faculty about their perception of a very top-down approach from the President, their perception of a loss of collegiality in the college. But the bottom line is, basically, the Board and the administration have the responsibility to protect the fiscal stability of the college and to maximize its educational offering. Sometimes you just can't wait for six months of consultative hearings or contract negotiations. Sometimes you just have to act. And as best I can tell, the administrations and Boards' recent actions have enhanced, rather than hurt, the students' educational opportunities. If there are savings from the new schedule, or if there's additional funding from the state, as our financial situation seems to be improving, I would hope that the Board and the administration use that money primarily to expand the number of classes available and to expand the number of students within those classes, rather than adjust compensation. So far as I can tell, that's exactly what the Board and administration have done and plan to do. So I would commend you for those actions and hope that you hold firm to those goals of expanding educational opportunity for our students and helping them complete their educational opportunity expeditiously so they can move up and out and onto careers or for your institutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Simon Fraser, Associate Students President. This will be my last comment after -- This will be my last comment after about a year and a half, at least, of representing directly the organization that is the Associated Students Pasadena City College, and I'll save the bulk of my report till later. However, I do want to highlight the calendar issue once more. The Calendar Committee, which is charged by this Board to recommend a calendar to you all, did so in April. It was meant to be placed on your agenda for discussion and possible action. It did not appear, and it has been indicated to me that it will not appear. Now, let me be clear. I recognize that the Board of Trustees has the right to make its decisions, absolutely. However, the Board must give every reasonable consideration to the process that occurs. Our complaint and our issue with no-confidence vote that we took, and we were the first ones, had nothing to do with the faculty. It had nothing to do with negotiations. It had everything to do with a process that we believe and continue to believe was not followed and is not being followed, that is there by law. I've been characterized by some factions as being a pawn in the Faculty Association. I have been described, and my credit at this Board, my credibility was maligned, my organization's credibility was maligned by members of this Board. I sat by quietly and listened to it. However, when I went back to that table and I participated in that Title V mandated process, it has not again returned to the Board. The process again has not happened. And that has been my complaint for many years, and it continues to be, that the student every reasonable consideration has not been given. And so, when I'm told that I'm misrepresenting facts to the statewide organizations that represent us directly, when I'm told that this is definitely not true and that I should wait for fact-finding, well, I would point out that fact-finding will deal with the faculty negotiations, and that's fine. I will be very seriously considering engaging in fact-finding of my own from the Associated Students' point of view. We only have, I only have a month left in my term. I would rather not spend that time in discussion with the Chancellor's office, in discussion with an independent fact-finder, because I believe, as Dr. Rocha has said, truth will out. And I stand by our claims, I stand by our process, and I also stand by the fact that once again, a shared governance decision, a recommendation to the Board, has not been given every reasonable consideration, and based on my indication so far, will not be given reasonable consideration by the Board, and that, as we all know, is a violation of Title V. That has always been so far, that will continue to be my issue, besides the fact that 14,000 students at least were allowed into extended spring registration come day one, and very few of them were able to register because our computers died. Thank you.
Margaret Sedenquist to follow, and Yuni Parada.
Good evening. I'm Chris Pilone, professor. I understand that the Board does not really understand how a lot of things work on this campus, and I'd like to give you an example of how your removal of the winter intercession and adding of this extended spring have affected my program, graphic communications technology. Traditionally, if a student is enrolled in a class in a semester, like an A class, if they're passing that successfully and there's no indication that they're not failing, they're allowed to enroll in the B-level class when enrollment comes along. When you put this extended spring schedule on top of the spring schedule, it completely blocked that action. Students were considered to be co-enrolled, not enrolled in two separate semesters. And what that meant was that none of my advanced students were able to enroll in the extended spring classes. So, that has effectively kept a lot of students from finishing the Capstone course that would have completed their certificate. It will affect certificate completion rates in my area negatively. This is not helping student success to have done this. This is actually blocking our students from completing their program. I have a class now that's almost completely full of beginning students, rather than a balance of some A, some B, some C, some D. I would really like to encourage you to consider returning to the traditional winter calendar, summer calendar, two semesters, which we had before. It was working fine. We did not have any of these kind of problems, and you have really sort of derailed a system that was working very well and caused students to not be able to complete their work, rather than to be able to be successful at their studies. And this is in the vocational area, so we're not talking about transfer students here. We're talking about students completing career and technical education programs. You have hurt those students. Thank you very much.
My name is Yuni Parada. I am a Pasadena resident since 1975, and I have been involved in the community ever since. I'm presently a member of different organizations, among them Pasadena Human Service Commission, ACLU, et cetera. But today, I'm representing Pasadena Latino Forum as co-chair. Pasadena Latino Forum was founded to advocate and find ways to improve conditions of the Latino community and the community in general. Since 2007, when James Consler was still president of this organization, we have been requesting equity in the hiring of teachers and staff of this college. During Ms. Perfumo's administration, we continue the same advocacy. We used to address this body, President Martin and Board Member Jeanette Mann should remember, requesting that teachers looking like us, like me, be hired with no success. The hiring of teachers was in the hands of the almighty Academic Senate. The issue at present, that the staff and faculty are upset with the administration, I think should be the other way around. The administration should be fed up with the machiavellian manipulations that certain staff and managers are orchestrating against Dr. Rocha. The issue at the root of the cause of their no-confidence vote is, in my view, is the almighty dollar. It's not that the administration does not attend to the needs of the student. This college is top-rated. A contract that allows an art professor to earn $197,000 in a single year should be questioned. Any contract allowing this kind of abuse should not be ratified by this body. And of course, hiring full-time tenure teachers looking like the student population it serves should be considered. I pray that Dr. Rocha keep himself strong to the manipulations of the teachers and that the Board of Trustees supports his endeavor. Thank you.
Danny Hammond. Roger Adams.
President Martin, members of the Board, thank you for your time. My name is Danny Hammond, and I am a faculty member at CEC and the co-leading negotiator for the Faculty Association. I'm here to respond to your official statement of April 15th. In particular, I want to address the statement number two, in which you suggested that the Senate's vote of no-confidence was premature because all the facts are not in and that the issue is before purb. I also just want to address those in the audience who spoke before, who referred to us in the union, apparently, as mean and angry and orchestrators.
Sir, if you, this is a Board of Trustees meeting.
I'm not angry.
You've got to address it here.
I'm not angry, and I'm not mean, okay? So, I'm just here to talk to you.
Thank you, and that needs to be towards me and the Board.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. With all due respect, what you don't seem to, what the Board doesn't seem to understand is the difference between contract negotiations and shared governance, or the difference between doing what you may believe to be legal and doing what you think is best for the students and staff and faculty at PCC. The Academic Senate's vote of no-confidence has nothing to do with contract negotiations and the unfair labor practice charged filed by the Pasadena City College, filed against Pasadena City College. The unfair labor practice was filed by the Faculty Association because we believe that imposing a calendar on faculty which significantly and substantially changes their working conditions without negotiating constitutes an unfair labor practice. And as you state, purb will make its decision on this matter probably sometime in July. This is a contract issue. However, even if it is determined that PCC can legally change the school calendar significantly and substantially changing the working conditions for hundreds of faculty and staff and the learning conditions for thousands of students without negotiating, this ruling has nothing to do with and does not affect the administration's blatant and continued disregard for the shared governance process here at PCC. It does not mean that it was the right decision or in the best interests of the students, staff, or faculty. On the other hand, the Academic Senate deals with shared governance issues, and you're going to hear from them later, so I'll skip over this part. No matter how many times you conflate the issue of contract negotiations with shared governance intentionally or unintentionally, it will not change the fact that these are two very different issues.
Thirty seconds.
The purb ruling has no bearing on the Academic Senate's vote of no-confidence. As to your statement, all the facts are not in. The facts are in. Let me just read some of the facts. There was a calendar that was approved that was vetted through the whole shared governance process. It was reversed on August 29th without any shared governance input. That calendar was opposed by a very large and local group of students, staff and faculty. They asked important questions about the implications. They provided sound and thoughtful reasons why they were opposed to it, many of which have come to fruition. I'll send the rest of it to you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Members of the Board, my name is Roger Adams. I'm an attorney. I'm a member of the law firm of Adams, Hockett &amp; Hudson here in Pasadena, and I'm an alum of this school. I went through the Pasadena City Schools, and I spent four years on this campus. The first two years was when this campus was sharing, was being shared by a brand-new entity called Pasadena High School and Pasadena City College. And then, I spent two years here at Pasadena City College. I came here instead of going to USC where I wanted to go because my parents couldn't afford to send me to USC, but once I began attending this school, I found it to be a good place. I felt I was in the right place, and I later was able to go to USC on a full-tuition scholarship. Then, I went in the Navy, and then I came back and went to USC Law School. Because I had these good experiences here at Pasadena City College, I'm quite distressed by the controversy that's going on here. I am one of the signatories of a letter that Mr. Nat Reed told you earlier is going to be published in the Star News, and I support the administration in its negotiations, and I think that the mediation and the hearing that's going to be conducted should resolve this issue. Thank you.
Lynell Wiggins to follow.
I'm Dean Stefan, retired president of Pankow Construction Company, a company headquartered here in Pasadena. We design and build major commercial structures throughout the United States, from Long Island, New York, to Princeville, Kauai, Hawaii. And I've had a number of years of experience in dealing and negotiating with unions across this country because we are a union contractor. Union negotiations can be difficult. Management and labor often have conflicts in detail, but usually an overriding interest in the success of an entity. In this case, the hundred-year-old institution of Pasadena City College. I am concerned that the PCC faculty union is intent on destroying labor-management relationships and, as a result, threaten the success of the institution. Examples of my concern are the votes of no-confidence and the failure of union leadership to allow a vote on the mediated labor contract terms. Union leadership seems more intense, intent on expanding their power rather than enhancing the long-term interest of the faculty. Lost or certainly deferred pay increases, negotiating sustainable benefits, deadlock negotiations, and perhaps most important, eroding public confidence in the institution that the public enables and supports. At some point, the faculty should question whether they are properly represented. There are a number of other unions that represent multiple campuses that are more experienced and perhaps better prepared to represent them and could have the long-term interest of PCC community. I would encourage the Board to be determined in the defense of the trust the community has placed in them.
Hello. My name is Lynell Wiggins, and probably for the last nine years, I've worked here as an adjunct counselor in just about every area that we have, from student support services to career technical education, where I currently work as a CTE Transitions Coordinator. And the students that were here earlier are part of, I guess what I would consider the movement of us digging deep into Pasadena Unified and some of our, actually, all of the area community college district high schools, and trying to build pathways and a sense of career awareness for our students. The CTE showcase that we had a few weeks ago, we had about 400 students in attendance, and the students love being able to participate in the career technical education offerings. I'm here today to say thank you from a leadership perspective. And what I mean by that is, having worked in CTE for about five years or so, for a while, we suffered through not having a dean as we had a retiree in Ellen Liggins, the associate dean of CTE, and then trying to find that right person and waiting and looking for leadership, and you guys offered us that in Solomon Davila. And I think what you will see in the next few years will be dramatic in terms of the success and the persistence and retention of the students that are coming in, primarily because of the model highlighted by Brock Klein in his TLC to Deborah Bird and the Design Tech Pathway, the media pathways, us establishing the Health Science Pathway, as well as branching out into a variety of other areas. So, we're excited. That hasn't always been the case, and I believe CTE hasn't always been given the notoriety that it deserves in preparing a contingent and cohort of students for academic and career success. Many of our students go on and transfer, so it's not just to the workplace, like many would have you assume, that it occurs that way. So, in essence, I'm excited because I'm able to play a part in building bridges for students to make their way to Pasadena City College and move beyond. This has been a long time coming, and there's a lot of traction that is gaining way in the high school arena, and they have the right people in place at the district, Pasadena Unified, to help us continue this bridge and to see some great outcomes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for coming out. We are going to now move on, and I want to especially thank you for keeping the debate civil. I know I was taking notes, and I'm sure the rest of the trustees were listening carefully as well. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have meeting seven and a joint meeting with PUSD, meeting number eight. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee fellow, second by trustee Brown. Are there any corrections or additions to either sets of the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please, advisory vote. Thank you, trustee Israel, for being so on the game, and everyone else. So, that carries unanimously. Approval of consent items. I want to thank the trustees. There's been a lot of questions... There's been a lot of questions asked by the trustees. You don't know this, but when they get the packets on Friday and trustees read them, they do ask a lot of very good questions. Trustee Baum has been asking a lot of very good questions, and we get some of those answers in advance to make this a little more expeditious for all of you, or you could, if you stayed till the end, it would take an extra hour. I'm saying all that trying to find my list of consent items so we don't take another hour. And there, right there. Got it. I've got his. So are there any, is there any trustee that after submittal still has a few more questions we need to address? Okay, trustee Baum.
I just wanted to raise 138B and 140B.
Trustee Mann?
I just wanted to comment on 94 and 95P, not a question but a comment.
Dr. Mann, if you didn't, I was going to come over and push your button for you. I looked to you to do that. Okay, do I see any others? Okay, let's turn to 138B.
And we could also add 140B, and I just want to allow the administration for the record to explain, there are a couple of contracts that are being awarded well into the six figures and higher that have only one bid that was submitted that we're going to award. And I want to have an opportunity to explain to the public how that happens and to reassure them that the practice is sound and that we're finding the best qualified vendors to award these bids to at the best possible price.
Right. Thank you, trustee Baum, for the question. We appreciate it. We are, I've been on this, and what I'd asked since for a detailed explanation, your very good question, I throw it to our Executive Director of Facilities, Ruben Smith, to briefly explain how we arrived at these recommended vendors.
And I think, Dr. Roach, excuse me, Executive Director Joe Simonessi, from the purchasing point of view, can respond to that question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think Joe is a little, the direction that they're coming from, I think it would be Joe.
I'll throw it to you, Bob, and you throw it to him.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Roach. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Bob, I'll do it to you.
Joe, I think you're prepared to speak to that, and Ruben, if there's a follow-up, then you can jump in. Thank you.
So I will catch it, and I will throw it to Ruben if I need to. But this process is an established process. We did send out the advertisements to two different newspapers. We did also send it out electronically. We posted it, I'm sorry, excuse me, we sent it out to two advertisements. We sent it out electronically. We had a number of vendors that we sent the bids and the postings to. Some of them did respond. In one case, we had one responder. In other cases, we had more than one response. So we did follow the process. It was well-vetted. It was received correctly. It was opened appropriately. It was a solid process.
If you'd allow me a last, but like, one of them's for AV equipment and installation.
Correct.
And it seems like there's a myriad of vendors that provide AV equipment, and we only got one. Is there something that we're not doing to get, to reach out enough to get others to make such a, make proposals for our work? Or is the work so specific that there's only one qualified vendor for that?
We actually sent it out to eight different vendors, hoping to have a multitude of people respond. Unfortunately, only one did respond. The process did work. It was...
Did we contact them individually to find out that they were not? Or maybe they got a stack of invitations for proposals that they just didn't, it didn't make it to the top of the stack?
I unfortunately would not be able to respond to that.
And then like the Steinway purchase, which is, you know, 11 pianos at $68,000 apiece is a lot of money. There's Yamaha is a big piano company as well, you know, is...
We actually sent it out to six vendors. The two vendors that were received, one was Steinway and one was Keyboard Concepts or Yamaha, and the award was, the award was bidded to two vendors, for Steinway and for A Piano for Yamaha.
And that was because of an instructional preference? And actually, we have the faculty member and the dean here to speak to that if you would like further information on that.
Well, one of the things I would love to let the public know is that we're having concert Disney Hall caliber instruments that will be here that our students will be able to learn on, to know that we're going to have 11 $70,000 pianos.
Well, and I could also add, in speaking to Dean Arnoyne a little earlier tonight, we're replacing pianos that have been on this campus for 70 years. In fact, we have one piano that's been on this campus for 101 years. And we are maximizing the amount of revenue that the Measure P and the taxpayers have provided to provide incredibly high-quality instruments that will last another 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 years. And I believe that the Steinways is the preferred piano. Is that correct, Dean Arnoyne? So there's been a lot of vetting and review of this process by our Measure P team and our faculty.
Okay, my last question on this is, fill me in, because every other couple of years, I'll get a letter in the mail from PCC saying, "Come buy these used pianos because we've bought a whole bunch of new pianos, and so we're selling our new ones." So how does that...
Well, it's not quite the arrangement. I'll let Dean Arnoyne speak to that. He's got significant knowledge.
We've had an arrangement with Kawai where we've loaned instruments from them. It's a process that lets them provide pianos to us. It's partly marketing to new students, but also to let pianos settle that have been imported and get settled and tuned regularly, and then they sell them. So we do that. But, so we've been involved in that process, but we'd like to get out of that. That's kind of coming to the end of the road. And so we're replacing not only our 100-year-old piano and others, a total of about 395 years' worth of pianos, five pianos, but also replacing the five Kawais that we've been loaning. So we don't have to be in this loaning, provide-a-sale situation anymore.
Okay, so just get us excited about the caliber of instrument that we're going to be having in PCC.
Well, and not only that, but the caliber of the instruments, but Steinways will hold up and other brands won't.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, are there, then, Dr. Mann, will you represent us on 94 and 95P?
Yes, I just wanted to comment again on the length of service and the extreme loyalty and dedication exhibited by both our faculty and staff. Mark Glansman from Purchasing is retiring after 33 years of service. And the faculty, Robert McLean from Social Studies, is retiring after 36.5 years of study. And Judith Bransonberg in English is retiring after 22.5 years of service. And I think the fact that we have people who stay so long and have given so much to the college and the students is really a testimony that we actually also heard from members of the community of, to how the place that this college has in this community and how much it means to our faculty, our staff, and our students and former students.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, has any, there's been one item that's been withdrawn for consideration, right?
Okay, if that could get in, I don't know if we have a motion on the table yet or not, do we? I don't think we have a motion yet.
We don't. I'll make a motion then.
But you're correcting us on our, on the one that's in our packets?
Yeah.
Which is revised one in the packet for the audio record.
Oh, for the audio item or for the...
It's 135B.
No, 91P has been revised.
Right.
And 135B has been revised. It's a date correction. So let the record sustain. So can I entertain a motion to...
Motion to approve.
The consent items with those revisions.
Second.
I think trustee fellow and the second was trustee Brown. Okay, any further discussion? Advisory vote? Thank you. All the remaining board? That does carry unanimously of all board members. We are at item F, which is a resolution on the method of payment and word limitations for candidate statements. And we do have a sample of that in our packet, and I would entertain a motion. Is that...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got the wrong thing.
Yeah.
I'd like to move that we approve a resolution in item F, which provides that candidates pay for their own ballot statement and are limited to 200 words.
And thank you for that description, and thank you for the second, trustee Wa. Is there any discussion on that? Is that a discussion light? Dr. Mann?
No, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to figure out the word.
That's not a discussion light, but that's a discussion light. Trustee Thompson.
What's the current word limit? Current word limit?
200.
But isn't that what's going to be in this?
Yes.
What is it now?
200.
It's 200. We just have to reaffirm it. There's no change.
All right.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Advisory vote, thank you. Rest of the board, and that passes unanimously. Item, that's item G, which is the authorization for a temporary inter-fund cash borrowing. Is there a motion to approve item G? Got a motion by trustee Wa and a second by trustee Fellows. Any discussion on item G? Thank you, trustee Thompson.
I thought I heard that this was taken off the agenda, and I misunderstand. Thought Dr. Roach had said that.
No, that was the bond refinancing, trustee Thompson. This is a, well, I'll let Assistant Superintendent explain. It's a pro forma transaction to make sure that we can basically make payroll this month.
That's pretty much it. In your packets was some information on our cash flow projections. We're doing fine, but just from a cash flow point of view, this just helps us balance things until the Prop 30 money arrives late June or July or whenever it shows up.
The way this is, would you have to come back to the board for approval if you're actually going to borrow money?
No, this is basically inter-fund cash borrowing from one of our funds to another. So this would allow us to borrow funding, in this case, from Fund 64, and transfer that for a very short period of time into our operating Fund 01. So it's just inter-fund borrowing within our, within our own proceeds, our own cash reserves.
What requirement is there for repaying it?
The only requirement is that we want to restore the funding to the funds that it came out of as quickly as possible just to maintain good fiscal oversight.
Wouldn't it be better to have that, and here is a requirement that'd be repaid, I don't, three months or some period of time, or some requirement to be repaid and just have it as is right now?
Yeah, this is, this is the way this has been done in the past, but certainly if you wanted to add something or requesting that we would be refunding or repaying the money within a certain period of time, we'd be happy to consider that.
Trustee Thompson, would it be acceptable if the Assistant Superintendent reported to the board when the money was transferred back? In other words, basically, we're kind of borrowing from the savings account to put it in the checking account. So would that fit your...
As long as there's a requirement that it actually be repaid.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm comfortable with that because our intention is to put the money back.
Yeah, it absolutely is. In fact, in looking at the tab G there, there's a, the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth whereas, second sentence, "And the amounts borrowed shall be repaid either in the same fiscal year or in the following fiscal year if the borrowing takes place within the final 120 calendar days of the fiscal year." So there is language within there that speaks to that.
Okay, and they're going to tell us when it's actually repaid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Okay, those were good comments, and I know we've, and you do, report to the board when you do the borrowing as well.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know that that's in the language, but I know you have, and last time this came up, we said we want to know not only when it's being repaid, but we want to know when it's happening. And that needs to be coming to us regularly as well to keep up with that.
Yes, we will be happy to provide that information in your board packet. Thank you very much.
So I think that's understood in this, though I don't see the language here. So if the whole board ever gets, you know, 20 years from now, they have to come back to these minutes, but that it's understood that you will also be reporting to us when the borrowing is occurring.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, advisory vote, thank you. The remainder of the board, that passes unanimously by the board. We have some special recognitions, and it's that time of year, and this is truly a delight to some really fabulous organizations. And so, Dr. Roach, item H, I don't know if you need to discuss this, but we could certainly entertain a motion to approve item H, which is our commencement special recognition to the community president's Asian American Pacific Islander Advisory Committee. And we'd like to entertain a motion and then let you talk about it. How's that?
Second.
Trustee Wa was the motion, trustee Thompson a second, Dr. Roach.
Let me just ask Dean Thayer to briefly describe what the significance of this is, and if you approve it, what happens next?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Roach. Basically, every year commencement, the board bestows upon two groups, community and campus group, the special recognition for their service to the college. And it's been going on, at least that we've tracked it, early 1980s. And what happens is during the commencement ceremony, the recognition recipients will be publicly recognized on stage with the stage party, and so they will receive a resolution for their contribution to the college.
Okay. Sir, any discussion on the motion? Trustee Baum?
Well, first, I have one question that's unrelated, but for future years, the process of selecting these individuals, what's the process of nominating, and can board members nominate people for these recognitions?
There is one. Do you want to describe that, Scott?
Yeah, at the beginning, we solicit to all of the constituent groups' recommendation requests, and those names are forwarded to the group of faculty, staff, students, administration, foundation representatives to review, and then decisions made based upon the recommendations. So if there's any recommendation, definitely can be forwarded to the group.
So, and I may have, I'm sure it happened, but if the board members could be solicited for recommendations would be great. And then also, trustee Wa is a member of the Asian Pacific Islander Advisory Committee, so I was going to say that she made the motion. It's a conflict of interest, but we'd like to honor you as well through this vote as well.
Withdraw the motion so someone else can make it? That's fine.
Well, thank you, trustee.
Okay, advisory vote and the remainder of the board? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And similarly, item I, which is the resolution, special recognition to the campus Veterans Resource Center.
Move approval?
Second.
I think the second, trustee Wa. Any discussion? We have, go ahead, trustee Thompson.
Just wanted to say that we had a terrific veterans' recognition dinner and program last Thursday evening here, and Dr. Mann and I were able to attend that, and it was really very well done. Patricia Dornish Martin did her usual marvelous job in organizing it, and it was just a really remarkable evening.
Okay, and trustee Mann?
I just, Mr. Thompson said pretty much what I wanted to say, except that I do want to say I was very pleased tonight to see some of the veterans that we saw at that ceremony receiving Senate scholarships. And I think the president of our Veterans Club is with us tonight, is that correct? A young man from Florida. No?
Florida, yes.
Oh, he was here earlier then, yes. All right.
It's been, they've done a great job. Okay, trustee Hannah, advisory vote and remainder of the board? Carries unanimously. Thank you. We are at resolution 505, item J, support for Safe Zone Coalition, discussion with possible action to follow, and that too is in our packet.
Move approval? Second.
Okay, I think we have a motion by Dr. Mann and a second by trustee Israel. Is there any discussion?
I didn't know if that was something...
I'm going to, wait, don't push that green button yet. I do have something to say. I actually am in favor of a safe zone here. I believe the safe zone needs to be a safe zone for everyone, including the people that are listed, but many, many other groups of people that are not. And I wish the whereas's were more inclusive of more groups, because when we limit the whereas's to only two groups, it makes it seem like it's specifically for them. When we're trying to create a safe zone environment that's for all people, that might include battered women, that might include Muslims, that might include people who are in debt and just got their car towed by the repo man, that, you know, it includes a wide variety of... That, you know, it includes a wide variety of different people from different areas, and I believe, I have no problem with the final, therefore be it resolved part. But I believe, I wish the whereas's were more inclusive and reflective of total campus that can come together and, and feel safe. And so that's my one big problem with this resolution. So I'm going to vote against the resolution because I'd like the whereas's to be more inclusive to more groups, not that I'm opposed to the safe zone. Okay, oh, wow, now we got some discussion. Okay, trustee Thompson.
Before.
Well, you're the superintendent, you just talk. Okay. Wow, I sparked it. Okay, everybody's on a roll, and now everybody wants to talk. We're going to start with trustee Thompson. We're going to save you for the end, you're the superintendent.
I'm turning my light off.
Actually, okay, so trustee Thompson, trustee Israel.
Is there a time sensitive, is, is this a time-sensitive issue that we have to do this evening, or could it be go back for rewriting?
Well, what I'd ask is, first of all, there's members of the Safe Zone Coalition here. I'd ask them to come to the podium and to briefly talk about the.
No, 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 we're not doing that. This is a board discussion, and I'm going to let the board talk, okay? You guys are wonderful, I know you spoke last time, we heard from you, and I want to hear from, we're going to recognize the trustees and let the trustees talk. So the question was specifically, is there a time sensitivity to this? And if you want to ask somebody from the safe zone to answer that question, that's very appropriate.
Let me ask Dean Olivo to explain that.
Or the advisor, that's fine. Is there a time sensitivity?
There is not a time sensitivity per se, however, today is a day that's celebrated across the United States in, in regards to immigration reform. So it was meaningful in that respect. And I'd like to have Dr. Cecilia Medina just briefly describe, you know, the other time sensitivity issue.
On time sensitivity, please, yes, address the answer to the question.
I have an answer too, actually, to the, to the question.
Okay. It sounds like there is some significance to today.
There is.
Right.
Excuse me, hi.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, I'm A.C. Penella, and I'm part of the Safe Zones Coalition, speech faculty. Part of the sensitivity is, a week ago, we actually got a state commendation for the work that we're doing specifically with these two populations on our campus, and it was part of a larger national project around both immigration reform. And as we end this semester, we're also heading into, the next month will be, as we end this semester, we'll be heading into LGBT History Month. This is kind of a great time to support these two unique populations on our campus.
Okay, trustee Thompson, did that answer your question of time sensitivity?
Yes and no.
Okay.
The, if, if I may.
On time sensitivity, yes, go ahead.
Okay. The Safe Zone Coalition resolution is also attached to a national president's declaration, which occurred on April 19th. And I'm a signatory to the Declaration of College Presidents that not only supports the resolution, but also very clearly wants to have as broad a support as possible, so that especially our federal officials will push forward with immigration reform. Part of Safe Zone Coalition's work is to make sure that we are supporting the immigration reform, which is important to many students from many of our communities here at the college. So there was a national day on April 19th, and so while, and this is the last day of the academic year. And so I think the, the time sensitivity is such that we want to confirm our support and our signature with this national document, so that we can have that as a matter of record for this academic year and be able to have the Safe Zone move forward with its plans for the next academic year.
Okay, did that answer your question, trustee Thompson? If not, I think that's as good as it's going to get.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
Okay. Did you have anything further that you'd like to say on this?
No.
Okay, trustee Israel.
So it's the Safe Zone Coalition's mission to provide, you know, training, sensitivity training in, in relation to these two groups of, on our campus. And I think if, if it's going to be voted down today, it's kind of, I find it really disrespectful to be voted down today, only because the, this Safe Zone training has been really effective in helping students and staff and faculty on this campus. And in light of, you know, us going into LGBTQ awareness month, and, you know, it being May Day today, I'd really like to see this resolution pass, so I hope that it's, it's voted in, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Baum, then trustee Mann.
Well, I'm glad you raised this issue, and I, I would prefer that this be brought back, that is a little more inclusive. Because as I've mentioned before, the only hate crime that I'm aware of that ever had has occurred on this campus in the last two years was when there was a Koran burned and thrown to the, to the middle of the quad. And if there's a safe, another safe zone needs to be for students of faith, regardless of their faith, in this campus. And that hasn't been addressed by this, but I've, by this, and I'm concerned by that. And I would, I would like to see it, that all students should be free from discrimination. And, and I've raised this on a number of occasions, in fact, I brought up with President Rocha a year and a half ago when this happened. There was another White House initiative to increase religious tolerance on college campuses, that I wish we had participated in as fully. So I'm, I'm with you on this. I, I would be happy to support this, but I'd like it to be drawn more inclusively, and we can go down, we could start, we could edit it right here if we want. But, but I think that it should be more inclusive to include students who suffer from discrimination and harassment in, in other protected categories as well.
Dr. Mann.
Well, I support the resolution the way it's written, and for 24 years, I was the director, the special assistant, I had many titles for Equity and Diversity at Cal State Northridge. And they had a women's center, and that was a safe zone for women. And then they had the ethnic departments, they had Black Studies, Chicano Studies, and they had places, and that was where you would go. But, but the problem is, if you make a safe zone for everybody, it's diluted, and it's a safe zone for nobody. So I would be very pleased to support this tonight, and then if we get a recommendation that we should bring back the women's center, which I understand we don't have anymore, I would support that. And if we get a group of, of students wanting to have a safe zone for interfaith students, I would support that. But, but I, I do think it's really important that this particular, these particular groups who have come together and formed this, should, we should do this, which doesn't mean we don't, we're not against discrimination for everyone. But again, often when you have something for everybody with 31,000 students, it turns out to be something for nobody. So I, I will, I will be happy to vote for it tonight, as it stands.
Trustee Wa.
Yeah, having heard the rationale from, or I guess the reasons from both the faculty and the student trustee on the importance of adopting this resolution today, I would support moving forward and at least recognizing these two groups for safe zone. And I also support Dr. Mann's recommendation that we then, I guess, encourage for additional resolutions to also create safe zones for other groups.
Any other trustees? Okay, it's not really the right time for you people to talk, you didn't put it in a goal card, but you're all standing up there very politely and patiently. So I'm not going to let you all speak, but if one of you wants to, in two minutes or less, say something on the issue, collect your thoughts. I'm happy to let one of you do that and, and speak to the board. So you had an opportunity to fill in a card, you didn't, I understand. You have the speech teacher, that was a wise choice. Wise selection, I have to say, you're an intelligent group back there.
So I want to thank you all, and I want to start by inviting you all to come and attend a Safe Zone training. None of you have attended yet, and I look forward to seeing you at one of them. The reason I say that is the Safe Zones grew out of a student movement specifically, they were responsive to student tasks. In fact, we held focus groups with over 100 students who participated. And this way that we create the training was in response to students' needs on campus. And, Mr. Baum, I want to respectfully disagree with you, because we have students who are harassed, bullied, and are afraid to even report the hate crimes on our campus, which is why this training came about. And I say that because, let me give a more specific example, which is why we've been talking about this on campus. We're one of the last community colleges that still requires a PE requirement in order to graduate with an AA here. Many of our LGBT identified students won't complete their AA for fear of going near our gym, because they are have, are in such a hostile environment. The fact that our students are being denied a certificate of achievement because they don't feel safe on our campus is a travesty. And the reason we chose these two specific populations is because these are the two groups currently on our campus, and we recognize that will evolve over time, that currently need this support. We recognize that, of course, there, we can expand the safe zones, and if you take in the training, you'd know that what you'd hear us say is, our goal is to work ourselves out of a job. But the Safe Zones training is to train culturally sensitive, competent, classified management, and staff, and students to support our specific and current student needs. So while you're taking that into consideration, I don't say this because I think of it very lightly, this has a direct effect on our students' success rates, because they don't feel safe talking to faculty, staff, or feel like they can get the services they need to graduate. Our training has currently trained over 90 classified, classified staff managers and faculty on campus, and it's growing, and I think that that's a change that we can all support, because it's about students first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to give you, we're going to give you the final word. Now, in debate, that's, that's a big thing, right? Yeah, and you did a great job in debate there, so I thought we were going to give you the final word. I was trying to give you the final word, but trustee Baum, you're going to get the final word. No, man, this is going to go forever.
No, but first off, obviously.
Trustee Baum, trustee Israel, you have the final word, and then that's it.
But I'm going to make a motion too.
Okay.
As a trustee, I would encourage, and I would not, I would, I know not tolerate harassment or victimization by any member of this community. And I want to then be assured, if you're telling me that we're not doing enough, that our administration's not doing enough, that students feel protected to, to, to report incidences, then we need to do more. And so I just want to state that for the record. I do want to make an amendment then, I want to offer amendment, see if there's a second, to, to add a clause to, to the resolution. That, and I'm going to try to edit this on the fly, so, because I do want to get something that we can get to a unanimous support tonight, given the urgency that has been communicated to us. Whereas we, we have the two first whereas's, and then I would add a, a whereas. I would just try to figure out, I'm trying to think of, of a clause, but at the very least, I'd like to say, where's the promote, the, the fourth whereas, where's the promotion of LGBTQ students and the promotion of undocumented students? And, let's see. Along with the promotion of a environment that prohibits discrimination against any student, just discrimination or harassment, against or harassment of any student at PCC will enable, discrimination or harassment of any student at Pasadena City College, any student, faculty, or staff member at Pasadena City College will enable Pasadena City College to further its mission and goal. I want to broaden it to, to include at least some acknowledgement that there are other groups that, that should fall within this, and maybe.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I don't understand the amendment, where's it going to go?
Under, in the fourth whereas, is where's the promotion of LGBTQ students and the promotion of unaccompanied students. And efforts to prevent harassment and discrimination against any member of the Pasadena City College community will enable the college to further its mission and goals.
Prevent harassment of what?
And discrimination. Harassment of, and discrimination against.
All right, well, there's an amendment, there's a motion to amend this, is there a second?
I'll second it for purpose of discussion at least.
Okay, so we're, we're discussing the second. Okay. I'm going to let the superintendent speak first this time, and then I'll go around the board. Okay, Dr. Rocha.
Well, I think the, the discussion is, is useful for amplifying our understanding, and I deeply respect and even share the views that have been stated here, because there's, every single person in this room stands up and stands at the forefront of making sure that every single student, that's our official policy, we already have an official policy. This resolution has been brought to you tonight, what I would ask to address the trustee Baum's and, and other concerns, has been brought to you specifically by a group of faculty and students known as the Safe Zone Coalition, that have been doing specific training, designed specifically to educate faculty and staff on issues for undocumented students that exist in all of our communities, not only the Latino community, but also the Asian American community and the African American community, because there are many African American nationals that we have on, on campus. And, and also for the LGBTQ community, that's a very specific kind of cultural training that this group and no other group that I'm aware of on campus performs, in the same way that 15 or 20 years ago, we used to do gender sensitivity training and, and so on. So this comes with my strongest possible recommendation as, as this group of faculty and, and has recommended it through the shared governance process. But I also would say is that we, we have to be tireless in achieving the objectives that, that you have outlined, trustee Baum, and I would be happy to lead the effort with these colleagues to bring back additional, not just resolutions, but additional plans that would address concerns. I think your, your concern about the religious affiliation is, is extremely important, but that requires a different, a different plan and a different set of, and an additional set. So if the trustees can allow me time with my colleagues to prepare that and bring that back, then, then it would be able to see its way to confirm this resolution as it has come forward, affirm its support for this work, and then this group of, of colleagues can go forth and do its work, and then they can assist in recruiting other colleagues who may be very interested in supporting the, you know, religious and other issues that we may have. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, trustee Mann.
Well, I'm going to speak against the amendment, because, and, and Dr. Rocha has said pretty much what I was going to say, but I, I do think this is a specific group, it's a specific program. We do have a policy against prohibiting discrimination and harassment of, on, for all kinds of, of characteristics, age, sex, gender, and so on. And I, so I think we should support this, and then if we want, come back with something else. To me, it's kind of like a, someone comes in and says, a group of faculties says, I think we should teach French, because a lot of people go to French, and people need to learn about the French culture, and then someone says, well, we really ought to study Russian, so let's have a resolution that we teach all languages. I mean, it's, it, just, just because one group has, this is the group that's done the work and come forward, I think we should support them and, and not water it down by this broad general statement, which we already have. We, we have a policy against discrimination, harassment. But the last thing I want to say is, I'm very upset to hear, and I guess if I were naive, assuming something had changed, we've heard for many times that there are women's students who feel very uncomfortable going by the gym, because of comments that are, that are made and a kind of harassment. And to understand that that climate is, and it's usually, it would be, if it's uncomfortable for women, it's often uncomfortable for gay lesbians and trans junior person. It makes, I think that's something I'd like to hear more about later.
Trustee Brown.
I would just like to say that I think this resolution should stand the way it's written. I, I can appreciate what my other members are saying to a certain extent, but the fact is, we have a group of people that have worked and are victimized or harassed, and that's no secret. So I think this is. So I think this is a time for us to take a stand with them and approve this resolution. So no, I would not be in favor of any amendment on this. I think it should stand as it's written.
Trustee Baum.
Again, my thing is, I like the pledge that this would happen, but we had an incident where it happened, and because we don't have a group of Muslim students saying, "It's time to take action," we haven't taken action to respond to a hate crime incident that happened on this campus. And so I think it's incumbent upon us that every opportunity we have to express this that we should.
I'm going to call the question.
Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment that was proposed by trustee Baum that includes language, that expands this to include all students as he described. So we're only voting on the amendment. Is that clear to the board? We don't get to do this a lot, so we got to practice here before we get to the vote on our parliamentary senior. So if you vote yes, the amendment will go with this resolution, and the language will be added for the next vote on the whole resolution, including the amendment. If you vote no, then we'll go back to the original motion and vote on the resolution as it was presented. Okay, I think we're all clear there? So advisory vote. Okay, remainder of the board. Okay, so the motion fails four to three, and I think you can record the trustees that voted green and red for the record. Okay.
Motion to approve the...
So we are back. Well, I think we have the original motion, do we not?
Yes.
Mary, on the table, which is the resolution as it's stated. Okay, so, we're not voting yet, Tony. Trustee Baum is going to have the real final word. Famous last words is who has the final word.
I do just want to say that I will never take a vote that doesn't expand rights and create a safe environment, so I will vote in favor of this resolution, but I do hope that the other concerns were heard, because I want to continue. Everything I do will be toward creating a campus environment that is inclusive and safe.
And I guess I'm going to get the famous last word here. Okay, this is the last of the famous last words, but this was the word that started it all off, okay? So I do not want to see any of these students identified on here harassed in any way. I don't want to see any student harassed in any way, but my original concern still stands. Okay, we're calling the question. We're looking for the advisory vote in favor. The remainder of the board. Okay, so it does carry by a vote of six to one. Okay, thank you, people.
Thank you.
We are on item K, Authorization to Transmit the Third Quarter Financial Status Report. Is there a motion to transmit this report?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Mann, seconded by trustee Wa. Any discussion? Advisory vote, thank you. Remainder of the board. And that carries unanimously. We are at a public hearing regarding the initial proposal to the successor agreement for the 2013-16 from Pasadena Area Community College District to the California School Employees Association, CSCE, Chapter 777. I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this topic? Even if you didn't put a gold card in, this is a public hearing, you get a second chance. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to officially close the public hearing. And I believe, is there any further action required on this?
No, president.
By council, okay. Next, we have, I think, a very unique position. We have another public hearing, item M, regarding a joint initial proposal for the successor agreement for 2013-2016 between the Pasadena Area Community College District and the Pasadena City College Police Officers Association, POA. And I think this is the first time that we know in history where it's actually a joint initial proposal for the public hearing. So we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this topic? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And we will move to item N, which is an update on college emergency preparedness by our chief, Donald Yoder.
Okay, well, great, well, now we can start the meeting, and this is a very, very important topic. I know we're moving along on the agenda, but some time ago, after the terrible incident in Connecticut, we came together, members of the administration and staff, and I asked, under Chief Don Yoder's leadership, to make a complete survey of our emergency preparedness in general, and specifically to protect against threats that we might have, such as occurred in Connecticut. And under the chief's leadership, this group has been hard at work for several months since that incident, actually before, but they moved into a different gear. And so today is an important update about what the group has been working on presenting, and this is for discussion only, there's no action, but we do think it's important enough, especially in light of continuing incidents throughout the country, that the public, the faculty, staff, and students, that the police are sworn to protect, that all of us really take a few minutes with this to come together, think, discuss, and consult, to see how we can ensure, to the maximum extent possible, the safety and security for all of our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Rocha. Actually, prior to that, when I first met Dr. Rocha and Bob Miller, that was the plan from day one, was we have to make this the safest campus in California. And these are your marching orders, and this is what I expect of you. So I can't tell you the number of conversations Dr. Rocha and Bob Miller and I have had on this. Every time an incident occurs, we're emailing each other, we're calling each other on the phone, we've had several face-to-faces on this. So we actually pulled the previous emergency preparedness plan, and we found probably a ten-page plan, going back ten years. With the help of my staff, we're probably up to about a hundred pages on the current emergency preparedness plan that we have. What you have in front of you now is just the executive summary of that plan. So as we work with the colleagues sitting at this table over here, that plan will probably exceed about two hundred pages, just on emergency preparedness for this college. So to start with this, of course, the emergency preparedness plan identifies natural and madmain emergencies that may have an impact on our campus. As the chief of police, our number-one job, and the officer's job here, and even with the use of cadets, and the community itself, is the safety of this college. Students, faculty, staff, and the visitors, it is our number-one goal to keep this as the safest community within the city of Pasadena. A basic emergency procedures which are outlined in this guide are protect life and property. This is done by utilizing all PCC resources before, during, and immediately following an emergency. If an emergency reaches a point which we cannot handle, the president and his designee, whether it's Bob Miller or Dr. Bell, may declare a state of emergency and implement the emergency preparedness plan. As we all know, an emergency or disaster may occur at any time of the day, weekend, holiday, with little to no warning. As a reminder, our emergency operations plan should only be used as a guide, and it would change based on the type of emergency and the personnel and resources that are available to us. Our mission is to respond to all emergency situations in a safe, effective, and timely manner. We do this with keeping in mind three priorities, and of course, number one is safety, the safety of the campus, the safety of the students, faculty, staff, and again, those visitors that are attending, or here on campus. Our second priority is to maintain life support, which is to protect our environment from hazardous materials and to assess damages to buildings. Our third priority is to assist in the restoration of general campus operations, and as law enforcement, our primary goal is to maintain the security of the campus. I'm sorry. Emergency operations. As said, President Rocha, Senior Vice President Miller, and Senior Vice President Bell have the authority to activate the campus emergency plan and the emergency operations center. This authority is governed by state and federal legislation and PCC policy. PCC follows the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is FEMA, and California Emergency Management Agency, CALIMA, comprehensive emergency management program model. The model addresses four phases of emergency management, which consists of mitigation, which is the strengthening facilities, and campus against potential hazards, which is done through ongoing activities and actions to eliminate or reduce the chance of recurrence or the effects of a disaster. An example would be providing Pasadena Fire access to all of our buildings, so they can get acquainted, they have an understanding of each building that we have here. It can also be providing seismic upgrades of campus buildings and hazard identification elimination. Next is preparedness. Anticipating what can go wrong, determining effective responses, and developing preparation of resources. Examples of preparedness include developing and implementing the campus emergency operations plan, participating in training of emergency drills, and obtaining necessary equipment and supplies that may be needed in an emergency. Next is the response. This is determining the strategy to manage an emergency or disaster. When an emergency or disaster occurs, it's the how and what we do to keep our PCC community safe. This ranges to responding to emergencies and how to evacuate safely. We also need to keep people out, so it's shutting down the campus and not allowing anyone on. This is done through notifications and the use of personnel to lock the campus down. And lastly, recovery. How are we going to restore the campus to prevent conditions? It's getting back to normalcy in our operations and schedules. It's about determining how we are going to open classrooms while we rebuild. What gives us that authority, again, is the California Code, Section 8607A. This gives us the authority to activate our standardized emergency management system, which leads us to opening our incident command system. Our National Incident Management System, NIMS, has authorized the Homeland Security Presidential Directive 5, Management of Domestic Incidents. And this now leads us to our master mutual aid agreement, which involves Pasadena City College Police, the City of Pasadena Police, Pasadena Fire, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department's Fire also. And what's interesting in the UC system, they have their own mutual aid agreement where UC systems assist each other, and UC police assist each other. So we've been in contact with other community colleges to form that same program. And let's go to levels of emergency. We really broke it down into three different levels. Minor, which is level one, is an incident involving a limited area that causes minimal impact or interruptions to the campus. Level two is a significant emergency that disrupts an entire floor or building that may require assistance from external organizations such as Pasadena Fire Police. And finally, major, this could involve a serious earthquake or fire where multiple buildings are impacted, or it can actually be an active shooter situation where we need to evacuate, keep the campus closed until it's safe to do so. So as we've talked about response and what we do, I have to tell you, Don Ekman's not here, who's one of our leaders when it comes to campus emergency response team. There's a group of volunteers here on campus that volunteer their time to train, to provide that emergency response if something does happen on campus. And what they do is, they're fully trained when it comes to first aid, CPR, light certain and light certain rescue. Now, real quick, we want to go to Juan, and he'll talk about the campus emergency communication.
Actually, chief, to conclude this along, basically, I think it would be good at this point, I think the board can read the issues here, but communications is a big part of what we are all about, and so that slide is there. The other thing that I wanted to really take to the board's attention is the business continuity aspects of this. So in dealing with business continuity, Joe Simoneschi has been working very closely with the chief and others on campus here to make certain that in an emergency, should we have a major emergency, obviously, the first thing to do is we want to make sure that everybody on campus is safe, everybody gets off-campus is safe, we get through the emergency, but then how do we continue to do the business that we need to do? So a very big part of our planning going forward is business continuity. And as you can see in the pages that you've had, that you've had, that that's a big part of what we're planning on doing. We can give you more details on that tonight, but I think probably be more productive at this point, it would be to take questions from the board or comments from the board so we can respond very specifically to the concerns or comments that you've got.
And let me kind of guide some of those questions, because this is, you know, a really comprehensive report, and I appreciate it, as does the board. And one of the things that the board has been so good at about is studying these presentations beforehand. So what I'd like to do is to guide for the chief and the other members of the team here a couple of kind of questions, and you have it there. First of all, you know, what are we doing? You know, what is it that we're doing? And I think the two basic questions that I have to begin the question is, is that what's new in the emergency preparedness plan, and we've talked about this, is the increased incidence of active shooter and now bomb threat. Okay? So my first question is, you know, and I know you have an answer, is, you know, what do we do if, you know, God forbid, something occurs on campus of that nature? And the other question, I suppose, is, if you can begin to answer it, is, in order to get to where we need to be, is there a gap in resources between where we are? And in other words, the basic question is, in order to get us to where we need to be, is this going to cost more?
Yes, it is. And maybe the chief wants to respond first, but very definitely, we will be bringing things to this board at the June 5th meeting, as a matter of fact, regarding some staff positions that will help us in the area of health and safety, will help us in the area of disaster preparedness, and will help us in the area of business continuity. So that's part of the plan, and you'll be hearing from us soon on that.
And going back to the active shooter situations and the bomb threats, and we've seen it not just within the last three months, but several years now, going back ten years since Columbine, is how we respond. You know, dealing with officers and dealing with cadets now, they've learned through training that we continue to talk about and start working with is, really, how do we evacuate the campus? How do we keep people out of here? Our role as the cadets, or no matter where they're at, is to start moving out and maintaining an outer perimeter. Our officers know, being unarmed, that they have to maintain a perimeter within, but still maintain observations. We've been in contact with Pasadena PD, I've had many conversations with their chief, Sanchez, about their response. Response time from Pasadena PD would be twelve to nineteen minutes, and between that time, it's what do we do? Ours is safety and care for anybody that's injured and to keep observations on the active shooter. So when it comes to the active shooter part, bomb threats, as we know, especially in colleges in Santa Monica, just gone through this a week ago, it's a big occurrence. When I was in Ranch Cucamonga, and we had talked about with Dr. Bell when he was at Chaffey College, we were getting them off and during midterms and finals as a way to get out of taking a test. Through research, 99.1% of bomb threats are all false. So we really have to play off how the bomb threat was reported, our searches, and do we take it to that next level to that it is a good threat?
And moving away from the notion of active shooting and those types of things, we know from natural disasters, be they fires, be they earthquakes, be they other natural events, windstorms, what have you, we have thousands and thousands of students who attend Pasadena College. We have upwards of a thousand full-time faculty, staff, and probably eight hundred to a thousand adjuncts. We need to get back into business almost immediately. We've got to get moving, and we are not adequately prepared for something right now, and as the chief said, as Dr. Rocha said, almost from the time that we sat down with chief Yoder, that was a big part of it. Mr. Simoneschi, Executive Director Simoneschi... Mr. Simonessi, Executive Director Simonessi, has background experience from LA County and past positions in putting these types of plans together and developing resources in order to implement. So we are behind the curve in this. Dr. Roche has made this a high priority, as he should, and we're working to put our house in order in this regard.
Okay, well, thank you, and let's mop up a few trustee questions here. Dr. Mann.
Yes, I do have a question. I ask it every time we have a report on emergency preparedness, and I think the business impact rather addresses it. But I think Dr. Roche was there on Cal State Northridge in January of 1994, when they had the major earthquake, and the entire campus, no one was there, everyone was off campus. And Cal State Northridge had just received a state award for its emergency preparedness plan, but it was all on how to get people off, nothing on what to do if there's an earthquake and you can't get people back on. So I hope that in the plan, there is a, there's a provision for that, and it's more than just continuing the business. It's like if you've got a fence around your whole campus and you can't, you can't get the tape for the enrollment, how do you, what do you do? And I, apparently, that is a whole different, and I read this very carefully, by the way. I didn't see anything that addressed that issue.
If I, if I may, there is definitely a marriage between emergency preparedness and emergency response, which is that outward-moving response to an event, whether it's a local or, excuse me, or a wide event, fire versus earthquake. There is, on the flip side, you're absolutely right, the business impact, or I'm sorry, business continuity plan, or for government-sized, government-funded organizations, the continuity of operations plan, and they are interchangeable. But that looks at, how do you purchase supplies if your computer system goes down? How do you look at your computer system and determine what systems need to be brought up within eight hours, seven days, 30 days, 12 months? And you prioritize those things so you're focused, your resources are focused on the most important things. While we were having these conversations, Dr. Roche did talk about his previous employer and talked about how one of the suggestions was to bring in online classes so students could continue, so they go from classroom to an online format. Well, we need to look at that, and part of the presentation is a business impact analysis questionnaire. So with that questionnaire, as we develop it, we'll look at those types of functions and determine what we could do if a building was no longer usable, or if the campus as a whole is no longer usable. How do we move everybody from a campus activity to an off-campus activity while we're still moving forward with the mission of the college? So it's a twofold type of effort and approach.
Okay, trustee Baum, and then we'll get to trustee Warren.
First off, thank you for the comprehensive report. I found it very informative, and even the tips on what to do when there's a shooter or some, or on campus, that was helpful to know. The, we had a situation just a couple of years ago in my district in Lockingout of Flint Ridge, we had, first we had fires, and then we had floods and mudslides that we had to evacuate large sections of the community, and many people were forced into emergency evacuation areas in Lockingout High School. Is Pasadena City College on the grid to also be a resource for an area-wide disaster if there is, is one, and how we coordinated that?
No, we are working with the American Red Cross, Red Cross, who designates evacuation areas. We are looking, as part of our equipment and evacuation plan, is from tents to cots. How do we open not only, not only to the community here on campus, but what are we going to do for our surrounding neighborhoods to see if they want to come here to campus and places that we can house them? So it is, we are looking at that as part of our plan, not only affect the campus, but the local neighborhoods.
Yeah, my hope is that not only our campus, but also the CEC would also be an asset to the community in any emergency response. And of course, safety of life and land is first, but I do appreciate that the next one is getting the business operation, getting people back to teaching classes and students back in the classroom as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. You bring up CEC, and that's actually what we're looking at for our next Secondary Emergency Operations Center, how, if we do have to merge services there, is utilizing that building also.
Yeah, I would love if everybody in this neighborhood would rest a little easier knowing that PC, you know, that usually they complain about traffic, but they also will know that in case of a disaster, you're lucky to be close to PCC because you'll have access to help and support.
Absolutely.
Trustee Wa.
Yes, I've sat on the emergency response teams of the City of LA for some time, well, almost all of the years that I worked in the City of LA. And so one of the things, I just have two comments to offer. One is, I hope that we will, as part of the emergency response plan, work with AS to develop a strong communication system to outreach to the student community when there is an emergency, so we have some method of communicating. And the second is, and I know this next comment will cause Dr. Douglas and probably Mr. Smith to smile a bit, but, and I hate to be so techie about it, but I think GIS is a really important technology for us to look at and to incorporate. I know that we in the City of LA, one of the things we did was we GIS and mapped out all of our facilities so that whenever there was an emergency, if LAPD or whoever had to come in and respond, we knew where all the emergencies were, emergency exits, we knew exactly where the plans were. And then the local, and any of the responders and our fellow law enforcement also had access to that so that they could come in and be a partner to us. So with Google Maps coming in and mapping out of all of our classrooms, it would be a really good time to get those digital files from them when they finish, and so we'd at least have a start in that.
I'll just add, Mr. Smith has already sent me, and we're talking about Ruben Smith, our Executive Director of Facilities and Construction, a very detailed email of his plans in that regard regarding GIS, so that will definitely be part of this.
And Dr. Mann, if I could just brief, Ms. Wa, I'm sorry, I'm going, I'm all over the place studying as well. If I can mention on the AS front, one of the things that we were planning to do for the month of May is to work with PR as we start to move our web technology to a different platform. The AS will give up some of its front banner space so that should the alert system online on the main PCC site activate, it will cross-reference over to the AS website, and a message will go out on our list serve as well, as small as it is. And we're also going to recommend to next year's week of welcome people that everyone who comes over in order to get free food not only needs to participate, but needs to sign up for Alert U.
Okay, I think this was a good discussion, very timely and very significant. So I want to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Wonderful backup support here. And I think we're ready then to move on to our next item, which is smoking on campus, smoke-free campus, item O. Dr. Roche?
Yes, this is an informative only. There was discussion at a previous board meeting by several of the trustees about the, you know, various, and also discussion and some input from students about changing or altering our existing policy 5575, which references smoking on campus. And there was discussion at that time of altering the policy to move to an actual smoke-free campus. So as a service to the board, I've collected some standard materials and present them as an informative.
Okay, and the lights are coming on. So I know we talked about this at a previous meeting. I certainly saw a handwriting on the wall on any policy that ever gets to the board on a smoke-free campus. I mean, I remember Walter Shadford, the library's name for former trustee Walter Shadford, and his wise advice to me was learn how to count to four on a seven-member board. And I think we've done that. So I don't know that we need a lengthy debate, but it is on the, here is the discussion item, and I saw Dr. Mann first.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to say that there, that this is good information. I think we could add that Glendale College just recently became a smoke-free campus. The President of the University of California has issued a mandate that all the UC campuses become smoke-free, and I forget, it was either UCLA, it was one of the Southern California ones. I think that the, that we have heard from the students, we listened very, very carefully to what they had to say. I personally think that this is a health and safety issue, and that the, that the board should revise its policy and that we should move forward in becoming a, into becoming a smoke-free campus. Now, one of the things I liked about Glendale's policy was, or its way of doing it, it included an educational program, and it was involved, the health part of it, helped with maybe clinics for students who want to stop smoking. Probably everyone knows, anyone who's watched television knows what smoke does to your lungs, what your brain looks like on drugs, I mean, that kind, that kind of thing. But I think it's, if we do this, we should, we should approach it as a health and safety issue, which in my opinion is what it is, and that we should move forward with this.
Okay, trustee Baum.
My question is then, this information is helpful, and should we anticipate a recommendation coming to the board soon? And then when it's, then we will be amply prepared to discuss and decide once a recommendation comes to us.
I think it is wending its way.
Yes, sir. The Health and Safety Committee is very deeply engaged in conversation and discussion right now about a policy, and this, this discussion will be, will be very helpful. If it indeed is the sense of the board that they would like us to look seriously at this, then that will add an element to the conversation that needs to be added.
Well, I'll just say, going back to January, when I first met with Juan Ashton, too, one board member feels, is eager to receive a recommendation that has, that the campus community brings forward.
Very good.
Okay, trustee Thompson, and then trustee Brown.
Whatever policy we come up with really has to be one that we can enforce. And it's, if we have enough police folks around, or they can recruit enough to enforce this, I think that's going to be very important, otherwise it's not going to have much effect at all, and I think that's going to be a huge challenge. Somewhat of a jovial approach to this, I'd like to suggest that we appoint Mr. Fraser to this committee to work on a smoke-free policy. Have you stopped smoking yet, sir?
I actually just today enrolled in the smoking cessation program at PCC because I also can count to four and realized where this was going. I'll let you know how it goes.
Did Walchaper talk to you, too?
If I may take the brief opportunity, is the Student Senate for California Community Colleges held its planning and policy session over the weekend, and this was a very contentious discussion. Ultimately, the resolution at the state level on smoke-free campuses was voted down as it was determined that we are not a health and safety organization, and that wasn't really our role, and it should be left up to individual districts to make decisions as opposed to being a statewide policy. As far as AS discussions, because apparently the rest of my board can count to four, I guess Chaff has been having a lot of conversations. We have considered a couple of different options, including transition dates, including requiring certain educational programs if the policy is violated, and so we're looking into items that will then go through the process and hopefully wind its way through.
We're, trustee, are you done? Trustee Thompson, did you have more? Then we're looking to trustee Brown.
Well, I was just going to add to this, that I think I mentioned this before, I am not in favor of smokers, or not smokers, but I do have concerns that when we implement a policy, we should maybe see first of all how the students on campus, which are the ones that are going to be impacted on this, I'm not sure if we have ever taken a vote or a survey to see how many students are really willing to participate in this. We, that would be one thing I'll be concerned about. I know that we as adults, we know what's good for you and what's not good for you, just like we tell our kids, you shouldn't do this and you shouldn't do that. But there is some degree of responsibility that individuals need to take for themselves, but I also have a problem just because I can impose rules on people, which is not really the right thing to do. The City of Pasadena recently imposed rules on property owners, multiple dwelling units that, well, you must not allow smoking in condos or in, you know. But the reality is, they cannot impose it, the people who they're expecting to impose it are the property owners. So here, going back to what trustee Thompson said, so if we decided as a board to, yeah, we're going to implement this non-smoking policy, we still have a problem. A smoker's got to be a smoker, and they will smoke. So who's going to walk around imposing fines? Do we have enough resources to do that? The problem is no. I think we need to do this in a way where people will be, you know, kind of willing to. Or I think it was Simon mentioned, or I think it was Jeanette mentioned, that maybe we could start out by giving some classes, some education about, well, you know, these are the effects of smoking or what have you. So I think it's a good thing, but I think we should do it cautiously.
I haven't recognized trustee fellow because he hasn't spoke on this topic yet.
As you know, I'm very much in favor of a non-smoking policy. I think it's incumbent on us as educators and at a college to make students not smoke, and I agree with Dr. Mann that it should be an educational approach to this. Cal State Fullerton is a non-smoking campus, and we don't have people going around enforcing, but after a while, it's, the students take the measure, and if they see somebody smoking, they'll just say, this is a non-smoking campus. I don't expect us to be giving fines or anything, but it sets an example. And usually, in a few years, the students will be the ones who will be enforcing the policy. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Mann.
Okay, I had two of the things I was going to say. Trustee Brown touched on it, but I, you know, we are located in Pasadena, although we represent many other cities, and as of July 1st, the only place you can smoke legally in Pasadena is in a private home. You can't smoke in an apartment building, you can't smoke on the street, you can't smoke any public place, you can't smoke in anyone's workplace, and are at PCC, apparently, if we don't, if we don't have this. But I, but the thing that I think is really important is what trustee fellow just said, which I think is what will happen. The, what I read from what the President of the University of California said is, we're not going to try to enforce this. This is not, enforcement is not the issue. It will be enforced. If you walk around campus now, I see people smoking only in the designated smoking areas. I don't think that should be an issue. How much is it going to cost to enforce it? I think that we should just assume that people are going to, will abide by it, will have an educational program. I don't think the City of Pasadena has a smoking police, but you almost never see anyone smoking anywhere, and people will say something. If you're in a restaurant in Pasadena and someone lit a cigarette, I think everyone in there will be throwing water on you or something. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think we should focus on education and that enforcement is, we're not going to, we couldn't afford to hire people to go around and write tickets for people caught smoking. It'll have to be done through peer pressure and through, and through education.
Okay, so this was information item only. I think I'm, let's, trustee Wa, if you want to, I think everyone else had a chance to say something. I'm obviously just laying in wait for the smoke-free campus policy to come. The sooner it gets here, the better. It's just a matter of time, as far as I'm concerned. Trustee fellow said it better than I could, and I don't want to make the meeting go any longer, but that's where I am. And so I think we completed it yet again, as far as an information item, and I think you should be feeling some pressure across the campus that the board wants to see this come back and soon. So go and run. Report on college, item P, report on college operations initiatives and shared governance. Dr. Roche?
Yes, very, very quickly, most of my report is in, in fact, all of my report is in written form from both myself, the assistant superintendents, and their staff. So I know that you have read that, and that is the sum and substance of my report. My report will regularly now be extended to include shared govern- My report will regularly now be extended to include shared governance activity, record of consultation, not a minutes of shared governance or, or the recitation of issues. And that activity report is, is in your packet. And I would only say to conclude that we had, I had a meeting, a very collegial and civil meeting with newly elected officers of the academic senate, including President Cairo, along with the two assistant superintendents and Ophelia Ariano. We had a good discussion, we got some things squared away, not the least of which is agreeing to a tentative meeting schedule moving forward. So we look forward to working with the new leadership of the senate. So that is my report.
Okay, I'll extend congratulations to the academic senate president-elect Cairo, sitting in the back faithfully attending the meeting, so thank you. And I'm very pleased to hear people are coming together and talking, so thank you for that as well. I was going to wait and tell you privately afterwards, but he set it all up, and I know you're here, so I'll just say it publicly for everybody. I appreciate you guys getting in the same room and, and talking like that. We are at item Q, shared governance, and I look to President Fraser.
Thank you, President Martin. Most of what I, the negative stuff I got out earlier, so I'll just stick with the positives. This is my last meeting representing the Associated Students Organization. On this campus, I've been doing that since around about February of 2012, when President Jackson was unable to attend these meetings. So it's, it's been interesting and turbulent, but definitely an honor to represent the Associated Students to you each and every meeting that I've attended. The new incoming Associated Students President will be John Fraser. We are still not related, and his board looks forward to getting straight to work on many of the issues. As you know, our term now changes in June 1st to sync up with the student trustee terms. I was in attendance at the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. We discussed a lot of different policy items, not only the smoking policy, but also several bills that will be going through legislature directly related to student representation, specifically AB 1358, which expands the student representation fee, again optionally, to a $2 fee instead of the $1 we currently have. If we chose to impose this upon ourselves, and when I say choice, I mean it has to go to student vote, and there are specific thresholds it has to meet before it is adopted, then it would mean that the $1 would remain on campus, but the second dollar would go directly to the Student Senate Organization. Because right now, the only funding they receive is about $30,000 from the chancellor's office and whatever donations they can beg from community colleges around. So that's, that law is going through, and it looks like it has pretty broad support. The second issue was AB 955 on, from Assembly Member Williams, which the Associated Students has taken a position of strong opposition to, as we believe it encourages two-tiered contract education, the likes of which we saw at Santa Monica College attempting to be implemented. And the third is AB 447, which currently changes the student trustee role to make a lot of the current privileges that are afforded by the board, which this board already does, a part of the law, because there are community college districts that don't currently do that. The main focus of discussion was what is the role of the student trustee, and there are some quarters of the SSSCCC who would like to see this trustee, similarly to the CSU and UC Regents and trustees, having a, a vote that carries as opposed to an advisory. I don't know how far that's going to get out of anywhere, but I just thought you'd all like to know. Beyond that, it's been an honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Fraser, and President Hammy.
Good evening. Let me also publicly congratulate President-elect Cairo on his election. And this, I have one more board meeting, and then I'm off to Indonesia. Maybe I should stay there. By, by, I have a vote of 24, yes, zero, no, and one abstention with eight absent. I've been directed to read the statement to the board. By the way, I did not have a vote in this resolution. Whereas President Mark Rocha, the president superintendent, has repeatedly violated the regulations in spirit of shared governance. Whereas President Mark Rocha violated AB 1725's provision for shared governance, which reads that a community college district's governing board must consult collegially to develop policies on academic and professional matters by relying primarily on the advice and judgment of the academic senate, or the governing board, or its designees in the academic senate, so reach mutual agreement by written resolution, regulation, or policy of the governing board effectuating such recommendations. By one, on August 29th, 2012, you know, latterly recommending cancellation of the winter 2013 intercession and willfully representing excerpted minutes from the calendar committee's discussions as the calendar committee is assent to in support for a trimester calendar, and in doing so willfully disregarded an ardently established senate-approved 2012-13 academic calendar, which had been A, signed off by all members of the college's shared governance calendar committee on April 12th, 2012, recommended for adoption by the college council on April 25th, 2012, and C unanimously approved by the governing, governing board of trustees on May 2nd, May 2012. Second, mandating a campus-wide instructional division realignment over the objections of the reorganization realignment committees, which had spent months deliberating and whose work President Rocha had previously authorized to assess restructure and realign structural divisions. Three, imposing class size increases in fall 2010 and spring 2013, disregarding the past practices and year-long process of the curriculum and instruction committee in developing pedagogically appropriate class size limits for the school, as well as the recommendations of the VP of Education Services. Whereas the Pasadena College, City College Board of Trustees, in keeping with the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges Accreditation Standards, delegates full responsibility and authority to the chief administrator to implement and administer board-approved policies without board interference and holds him or her accountable for the operations of the district. Therefore, be it resolved that the academic senate of Pasadena City College has no confidence in President Mark Rocha to maintain a healthy shared governance system, implement major changes responsibly, provide effective leadership to the campus community, and/or communicate accurately to the board the recommendations of the academic senate and the input of the campus community. And I'd like to, since I don't get a vote, I'd let the, my own statements on the April 1st minutes speak for themselves. Thank you.
Okay, and then remind me, Dr. Nagos, are you part of the shared governance thing? You're on the right table, right? So I know I, I get going on a roll, and I'm supposed to stop someplace.
I think I'm up next.
But you're, you're in, right? So let's.
I just want to thank Dr. Mann, Dr. Rocha, and the other executives for attending our Management Association Retirement Breakfast this morning. I appreciate you being there. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're at announcements then by the Board of Trustees. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, two things. Dr. Mann and I attended the award ceremony of the PCC Foundation last Friday evening at University Club, which was run by Bobby Martin, or Bobby Abram, and the foundation board. They awarded a number of faculty people, certain monetary gifts for their innovations, and that was very, very helpful, very great to do. Second thing I wanted to just make everybody aware of the fact is that on May the 30th, which is a long ways away seemingly, at the Athenaeum at Caltech at 6 o'clock, the Pasadena Educational Foundation is going to have its annual meeting. And the speaker this year will be Dr. Jonathan Veatch, the president of Occidental College. And so we hope all of you will come to that and support public education, and specifically PEF and its work to support the Pasadena Fight School District and the public schools of this community.
Okay, trustee Wa.
This, past weekend, I had a chance to attend the Apahi Conference, which is the Asian Pacific Americans in Higher Education, and one of the issues that came up that, that was kind of a, a big center of discussion was the whole issue of the Anapisi. And so since we're an HSI grant-funded college, there's been a lot of discussion in both communities, both the Hispanic and the Asian Americans, about the conflict and the grant funding. They had a really interesting professor there who has done quite a bit of research and has been working with Washington on the change to the process, and I'll forward the name to Dr. Rocha. But also, I had heard that the Haku representative from PCC also had engaged in some of that discussion. I wanted to personally thank Clara Poets fellow, who is related to one of our trustees, who actually made, how is she related? But she, she actually provided quite a bit of data to some of the legislators and was then contacted for additional data to, to help get more information about how we can provide for both communities and not pit them against each other. So I, I thought that was really great, so. The other thing is, as I mentioned before, that LAKSTA, we're convening a roundtable on the adult education issues for discussion between the K-12s and the community colleges, so I'll keep you posted. But the CSBA District 23 will also be convening a forum and a discussion on May 31st regarding the college readiness issues, and would invite all of the community college trustees and community to come and participate with the K-12s. So that will be at the City of Hope.
Trustee Baum?
Thank you, President Martin. A few things. Once about a week and a half ago, I had the privilege, along with other trustees, to attend the scholarship breakfast for the Pasadena, the president's Latino Advisory Committee, and it was, it's always one of the most inspiring events of the year to, to hear the stories directly from the students. And guest of honor was Jaime Escalante II, along with a PC, a student who was a, who's now a principal, who was a, a student of Jaime Escalante's as well. So Dr. Olivia, thank you for a tremendous program there. And as others will say, the, the premier of '42 was a really uplifting event, and that was wonderfully executed. Thank the foundation for making that happen. I had the privilege of representing PCC and community colleges before something called the Southern California Leadership Council, which is a group of about 20 people, but three of them happen to be former governors, Gray Davis, George Duke Majoran, and Pete Wilson, as well as CEOs from Southern California, and their focus was workforce development. There was somebody from the CIA, the Cal States, the UCs, the community colleges, and Labor, and every question was, we really need the community college leadership and workforce development, and, and what are we doing to partner with businesses? And, and I was able to share some of the programs that we have at PCC, where we're working with our Pasadena Water and Power and, and other agencies to create strong workforce programs, and it was an honor to be able to do that before Governor Duke Majoran and others. On Tuesday, next week is the student, the meeting of the Board of Governors, and one of the things we'll be taking up, and I'll be eager to hear feedback from our community too, is on course repeatability. There's that issue of how many times can a student complete a course and continue to, to receive funding for it, and it's, it's something that's part of the Student Success Task Force recommendation, and if people have opinions on it, I'd be pleased to, to receive them. And I wanted to share one other thing, and I'm going to go to the podium here. What we did at the chancellor's office just last week released something called the Student Success Scorecard for the, the state of California. Every community college district's student success numbers are now there for everybody to see, and it's, what's interesting, too, Pasadena City College, first and foremost, we should be very proud of the results that Pasadena City College is, is generating over time. And even though there are some interesting trends in some of the things that we're not, we need to focus on, the state has recognized Pasadena City College as a leader in generating results for students. One of the things you'll see in this slide is how students who come to college, prepared for college-level work, do have high success rates, that they either attain their degree or, or certificate within a fixed amount of time. Nearly three out of four do that. But the students that we inherit who are not ready for college-level work, that enter our basic skills, skills program, are less successful at a 44% rate. But, believe it or not, Pasadena City College is a tier above virtually every district in the state, and you'll be able to see what's very important for us, and I, I hope that our district continues to explore this. You can see over time where that information, you'll, I'm printing some of this out, and it'll come out. You'll be able to see success rates over time about the cohort size, age, broken out by ethnicity, and things like that. So I, I'm not going to go over the data here, but I encourage every member of the community who's interested and wants objective data, the, the district is, and the state is providing that in, in, by the chancellor's office, and that you can also compare our rates to similar colleges like Glendale, Mount SAC, Santa Monica. But overall, the chancellor called, office called me personally to say that they consider PCC setting the standard in, in both accountability and also the results on student success.
Thank you, trustee Baum. Dr. Mann?
Well, I have really nothing to add. I think I attended every event that was mentioned by the other, by the other trustees, and maybe a, a few more, like the Foreign Languages Award Ceremony. This is an exciting time of the year. I'm glad that I have the time to do this. One of the things I would like to suggest is, you know, the student success, I mean, the scorecard was one of the recommendations of the Student Success Task Force, and I think there is actually a legal requirement that the board is supposed to look at it and discuss it. So I would like to get a little ahead and suggest it as a future agenda item. I think trustee Baum gave us a good, a good start, but I think we need to talk about it, talk about what the implications are, and the data is very good, but there are some troubling aspects to it.
Trustee Brown?
Sure. This past Sunday was Super Education Sunday, and I visited New Revelation Church with a group of students and staff, and we were received very well. And I really would like to thank all the participants that were out this past Sunday, and I know that our president's been out not only this Sunday, but two Sundays in a row, and I really want you guys to know that we appreciate your efforts. On April 23rd, I attended the African-American President Advisory Committee Town Hall meeting at Jackie Robinson Park, and it was a well-attended meeting with several community leaders. So I am hope that our message is getting out there to the community as to what to expect with the new regulations and the message to the students. So I was pretty comfortable with that meeting. I was in San Francisco on the weekend of the 20th through the 23rd, attending the American Association of Community Colleges 93rd Annual Convention. I was, the conference was great. We had a great variety of wonderful workshops, and I happened to see a lot of our faculty down there in several of them, so it was a good time, and I was happy to be there. And April the 13th, I attended male mentoring and partnership youth development fundraiser, which is sponsored, I guess, from Muir High School and different high schools. It focuses mainly on the males. That's what it's about. So of course, and there are others, which I failed to record. Thank you.
Trustee fellow?
In return tonight, I want to praise trustee Wa, who continues to educate, I think, the trustees about Asian, especially this one, about Asian issues, and, and also to congratulate her for her work with Asian, the Asian community and raising scholarships for Asian students. And one of the events will be on Thursday. Controller John Chang will be the speaker, and so I appreciate your work in that effort. I also want to say ceremonies are very important. Perhaps one of the most important, besides marriage, I guess, is graduation, and I want to wish all the graduates much success, and I hope you'll all be out there. You know, I teach in Italy, where there are no ceremonies for graduation at the high school or college, and it's very boring. Thank you.
I have two. First, I attended the Measure P Oversight Committee. The committee is recommending, within the scope of the approved bond, that the college engage the architectural services of a professional architect to help with the secondary space issues, which is part of the bond initiative. So they wanted me to communicate to the board that the committee did feel that the expense of Measure P money for the architectural services to make sure that the space that's being reconstituted post Center for the Arts coming online was within the scope of the bond. Trustee Thompson? I, man, every time I speak, lights come on. It's amazing. Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, you had, your talks had, your comments had nothing to do with my opinion.
Oh, well, go ahead. Oh, well, go ahead. Say whatever you want, then.
This is Trustee Brown's comments that made me...
Oh, okay.
Put it back on. She reminded me that last Sunday, I went to Scott United Methodist Church on Orange Grove and Rosemont Avenue to take part in the PCC outreach program to African-American churches and African-American students locally. And Kim Miles and a number of student ambassadors were there, had a great program, set up a table for people to go and pick up literature, and it was really a great opportunity to be able to speak to the congregation and students and tell them about PCC and what we have to do. And I know Dr. Bell went to, was it Victory Baptist Church, Sunday also, and Dr. Rocha went to another one, too. So it's a great program. What's this, our third year of doing it, I think? And it's really wonderful. I think our African-American population has increased from about 5% to close to 10% I think this past year or so. It's paying off as well. So thank you very, very much.
Okay. My last announcement is I've been asked to read a statement to the college by the Board of Trustees that the Board of Trustees unanimously approved and asked me to read. And so I appreciate you that have hung in to the bitter end, have to wait till my turn to do this, and others have left. "The Board reiterates again its unconditional and unanimous support for Dr. Rocha. The status quo academic calendar for PCC is the current three-term calendar without a winter intercession. We respect and listen to all recommendations and views on the status quo calendar. Moving forward, the Board stands by its decision on the current calendar as the best one for student success and for the district's budget. Following the release of the governor's 2013-2014 budget and the completion of the independent fact-finding BIPRB, the Board will take all views into full consideration and make a determination and adoption of the academic calendar for 2013-2014." And that was, I was asked again, I'm going to repeat, I was asked by the full and unanimous Board to read that statement. Okay. We are at future board meeting dates. Our next meeting is a study session, and I'd like to inform with delight the Board that we are working on having our study session, which is going to focus on the accreditation, in District 6 at a site we hope to secure, a site very close to Rosemead High School. So we're going to use this as a study session and a chance for us to get out into the district. We're not, we're not going to make a big deal about inviting the Rosemead community, but of course, anyone who wants to come is welcome to come. But we thought it would be good to get out, and there is some particular interest that we have in getting out, and so we've made arrangements for District 6 this time. If others in their districts want to be able to report us being out and about, talk with me and let me know where, and Dr. Rocha, and Bob Miller, and we will happy to try to facilitate some more of those.
We met in our district last time, and I don't think we need to go back there again for a while.
Right. I'm just saying, if anyone is interested. So, and again, we're not, we're not necessarily expecting a large turnout by the Rosemead community or anything, but it is an opportunity for you to understand some of the breadth and depth of the PCC area community college district. We're going to go to areas that may shock you that are that far away and still part of the PCC district. And as far as you're going, there's much further you could have gone, because the first time I had breakfast with this man, we were south of the 10 freeway in PCC District. I made sure I took him to the far-flung corners of the PCC District. So we're going to go to a part of the district that we, not all trustees have got to go to much before. So that, but it's a beautiful, beautiful site. So we have the rest of our board meeting dates outlined. We have future agenda items. I know we have several. You've been all feeding me. I'm trusting Dr. Rocha has a very careful list. We are trying to work these in, but as you know, right now, it's 10 o'clock, and so we are trying to balance, you know, making sure items get on the agenda and people are awake to actually discuss them intelligently. So, Trustee Baum?
My just request would be that we enclose with board packets a tickler so that we know if something's been on the agenda, requested, that it's at least in, still under consideration.
A list of what items, what items we're working on.
Sometimes I forget, have I requested it or not?
No, you're not forgotten.
And, right.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And we used to have that in four colors and...
Right.
Kind of slipped off on that.
Thank you.
So we'll come up with our tickler list, so he knows that his items will come someday on the agenda. Okay. So I want to, again, not that most have gone, but it's been a very civil meeting, I believe. I think it's been a healthy debate. I think we've done it in the way that it's supposed to be done. I do appreciate the passion that not only the Board, but many people from the community have for Pasadena City College, and I think we have successfully made it to adjournment.